Test. Are we live?
Okay, they're getting the movie started.
The committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation Regulatory Concerns and Future Generations now convenes this hearing. In accordance with the open government law, public notices for today's proceedings were sent to the media on Wednesday, January eighth, twenty fourteen, and again on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty fourteen. Notices posted in the Guam Legislature's website, beginning on January eighth, twenty fourteen. For the record, today is Wednesday, January fifteenth, twenty fourteen. The time is now two thirty-three in the afternoon. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following items. Bill number two one six dash three two, introduced by Speaker Judith Wampat, and co-authored by Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes and Senator Aline Yamashita. An act relative to enacting principles of balanced and restorative justice in the juvenile criminal justice system between the victim and the offender. Bill number two thirty-six dash three two, introduced by Senator Yamashita, and co-authored by Senator Tom Adam. An act to add a new section thirty-one oh two point five and section thirty-one oh two point six through section thirty-one oh two point eight to chapter three of Title sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the Department of Revenue and Taxation to outsource the driver testing requirement for certain commercial drivers licenses and to the reciprocation of commercial drivers licenses. We will also be covering the nomination of Mr. Thomas V. Tanaka Junior to serve as a member of the cockpit license board. I'd like to take the opportunity to acknowledge my fellow senators who are present. To my immediate right is co-chairman of the committee Senator Tom Adam. To my immediate left is Senator Aline Yamashita. Senator Tony Adam. Senator Michael Tiago. And to the immediate right of Senator Adam is Senator Frank Uggan Junior. Just in general rules for the hearing, individuals wishing to present testimony are asked to please sign up with the staff. Please ensure that you indicate your support or opposition to the item for which you are signing in for. Unless otherwise decided by the chair, those testifying will be recognized in the order they signed up. Written testimony may be read. We ask that lengthy testimony be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony should be submitted to the committee for photocopying and inclusion into the final committee report. Testimony shall be confined to substance or nature of the bill being heard. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of the author or any member of the panel is not permitted. No debate or rebuttal shall be allowed between two individuals testifying. Individuals be allowed to present oral testimony only once. The individual may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the panel. When speaking, please ensure the microphone is on. You do that by pushing on the button there in the middle and the light will turn on to indicate that it's working. Hopefully, it works better than it was a few minutes ago. Individuals are asked to state their name also into the microphone for record purposes. We're going to begin with public testimony on bill number two one six dash three two. The author of the bill is Speaker Judy Wampat, and unfortunately, she's unable to join us this morning. And so I'll go ahead and read her opening statement into the record. And I would also like to invite Attorney Patrick Wolf to please join us, as well as Ms. Christina Noket, who both signed up to testify with respect to this bill. We also have two additional individuals who signed to testify, Ms. Michelle Titanneau and Mr. Art Dioro. Please join us. I'm going to begin by reading the statement from Speaker Wampat, who is the prime author on the bill. It is dated January fourteenth, twenty fourteen to the committee. And she begins by saying, "I would like to thank Judge Elizabeth Barrett Anderson and Attorney Pat Wolf for their assistance in drafting bill number two one six dash three two. Both Judge Anderson and Attorney Wolf have worked tirelessly to improve and modernize Guam's judicial system and community mediation programs. Since our island is so close knit, it is incredibly important to take a community approach when we respond to crime. Justice is not simply punishment. It must be holistic and effective. While bill two one six dash three two provides a creative approach to addressing juvenile crime, this approach is not new to our island. Much like the concept of restorative justice, our Chamorro ancestors resolved conflicts and decided punishment within the family. In fact, a deep reverence for one's family often prevented people from committing a crime. Restorative justice allows for a more collaborative response to crime. It promotes dialogue between victims and offenders and between their families with the intention of repairing the harm that was done. This exchange can take many forms, most notably through conferencing models, victim-offender dialogue, and the circle process through which participants are given equal opportunity to share with a sense of mutual respect and responsibility for the well-being of the community. Providing victims and their families with a direct voice in determining just outcomes is very powerful. It not only allows for reconciliation, it has been proven to reduce recidivism. Communities using a restorative model as a large-scale solution to wrongdoing have been able to minimize the social and fiscal costs of crime. I look forward to the positive benefits of restorative justice in our island community. I encourage the committee to move favorably on bill two one six dash three two, so that it may be placed on the session agenda for this month's legislative session. And this is signed Speaker Judy Wampat, EDD." We're going to begin with the testimony now from those who've signed up. First, we have Attorney Patrick Wolf, sir.
Senators and chairpersons, and if you don't mind, my testimony, my written testimony is quite brief, and I'll just read it into the record and then kind of try to fill in a few gaps with a few additional comments. Dear senators, I do support passage of this restorative justice bill. Here are a few important background facts that you should know. Number one, restorative justice is, and I'm giving you a definition from one of the sort of godfathers of restorative justice movement, Howard Zare. Restorative justice is a process to involve, to the extent possible, those who have a stake in the specific offense and to collectively address harms, needs, and obligations in order to heal and put things as right as possible. Number two, Inafamalik reconciliation has been doing restorative justice since nineteen ninety-four, both for the Superior Court, primarily juvenile delinquency cases, and for island schools. Number three, there is no mention of restorative justice in Guam statutes. And that's really the biggest reason why we're here today. Number four, restorative justice can be used at any juncture in the processing of a delinquency or criminal case. Diversion, adjudication, sentencing, and even post-sentencing phase. Number five, while judges make restorative justice referrals based upon their inherent authority, other agencies such as police, probation, prosecutors, and correction officials are reluctant to do so absent any recognition of restorative justice in Guam law. And finally, number six, participation by victims in restorative justice processes is entirely voluntary, but there are distinct advantages for victims to do so. Having recognition of restorative justice in Guam law would help make restorative justice known to victims. And if I may just make a few comments before turning it over to the other people here to testify on this bill. I just want to first just say a few things about wording. And so if you can just follow along with me, on page one, line four, where it says, "Restorative justice be included in shaping how juvenile criminal justice system," obviously, there's a typo there, so there really should be a slash between the juvenile and criminal justice system. The point being that the restorative justice is equally applicable in both a juvenile justice system and in a criminal justice system for adults and juveniles. On page two, line fourteen, I just wanted to point out that it uses the term sentence there, but in fairness to the juvenile justice system, we never use the term sentencing in that court. It's always disposition, so I just wanted to mention that because if we end up with something that is applicable only to the juvenile justice system, then disposition would be the better term. I would prefer disposition slash sentencing because I believe that restorative justice should be recognized both for the juvenile system as well as the adult criminal system. And line eighteen, I wasn't sure if this would be clear to the senators, so I just wanted to comment on the last few words that says, "If there is no victim." So the reference there would be if the crime was something like, for example, public drunkenness or possession of marijuana or truancy, where there's no specific victim, restorative justice processes can still be used because there are harms to the community. And so that's part of the reference there, but it also would include the situation where a victim was unavailable, because perhaps off-island or simply unwilling to participate. So restorative justice processes are still effective. And the last thing, just on the wording that I wanted to mention, and I have to confess that I should have thought of this sooner, but I want to point out that since Inafamalik started doing mediation back in the eighties, there was a statute passed by the legislature which provided for confidentiality for mediation. It's very important because then people know that they can talk openly and freely and not worry about somebody trying to use their words in an adversarial litigation in court. Well, the same would be true of restorative justice. However, the statute refers specifically to mediation and doesn't reference restorative justice. So I would like to encourage this committee to include some reference to that other statute or simply just some simple wording that says, "Restorative justice is a confidential process." But I think that's very important so that otherwise, you're going to find that attorneys will be telling their clients not to participate in restorative justice for fear that it may be used against them. I want to just give, and I know some of the senators, like Senator Uggan, who have heard me speak before, remember all this, but for some of our talented young senators, I just wanted to kind of give the simple model of a restorative justice case. And there's many different ways of doing it, but let's just take the best-known type of restorative justice, which is a victim-offender meeting. So let's say you had two teenage boys who went into somebody's carport and spray painted the walls and took some things that didn't belong to them. So in a simple victim-offender model, Inafamalik, if we got a referral of that case, would meet initially with those two boys and find out, first of all, if they accept responsibility for what they've done and if they want to make things right and they're willing to participate in this process. And if the answer to those questions, yes, then we would contact the victim and explain the process to the victim and find out, given the fact that we have offenders who want to take responsibility, is the victim interested in participating in the process? And explaining some of the advantages to victims of participating. And if that answers to those questions are yes, then there's the third meeting where we're bringing the two together for a restorative justice finale, if you will, and trying to get some effort to right the wrongs that were done in that situation. But I want to just say that if I left you with that, I would be really doing you a disservice because restorative justice is not a specific program. It's really a set of values. So in a nutshell, in our criminal justice system, we have basically three questions that we routinely ask, inherently, whether we're aware of it or not. But what we're asking is, what crime has been committed? Who committed that crime? And how should we punish that individual? In restorative justice, we're asking different questions. We're asking, what were the harms that occurred as a result of this behavior? What are the needs of that person who was injured or harmed? And who is responsible for making that right? So the two systems are not mutually exclusive. It's not a matter of choosing because the two systems actually work very well together. But what I kind of want to leave you with is a cup, sort of a, in a nutshell, some other ways in which restorative justice is done, which, you know, may not be obvious. So let's take, let's take, for example, there was a riot that happened a few years ago at Southern High School involving quite a number of Chamorro kids, mostly boys, and quite a number of Chukis kids, again, mostly boys. And they all had separate charges. There was like fifteen different cases in juvenile court. Judge Barcina's kind of corralled all those cases and referred them all to Inafamalik and asked us to do restorative justice. So essentially, what we did was meet with every one of those minors and their parents separately and ultimately decided that it was okay to bring them together. And so we had a, what is called a restorative group conference, which is a very large conference. There was about twenty, I think there was about twenty-five people present with a couple of facilitators from Inafamalik. So that's another example. Another one is, a few years ago, we were asked to do a training for CPS and this involved child dependency issues, abuse and neglect. And it was really to give some instruction in another model, which is called family group parenting, which is really a way of addressing those types of harms in a restorative setting. And this is, has not quite caught on here yet. Judge Merriman was really promoting it before she got bumped up to the Supreme Court. And however, it's actually used quite a bit in Hawaii. And then I'll just briefly mention the prison setting. And by the way, it's not just Inafamalik who has been doing restorative justice in Guam. Prison Fellowship Guam has also been doing it, both at the Department of Corrections and at DYA. And as I was coming down here today, I noticed that Bob Dames had sent me an email with some testimony supporting this bill. But in his absence, let me just say that there's two or three different things in the correction setting that are restorative justice. But one of them is a module, which was developed largely by Prison Fellowship. Kind of a module of six steps that you take the offenders, the prison inmates, through. And it's really about sensitivity to victims and their needs and thinking of ways of making it right, writing a pet letter, apology, or various ways. And then at the third module, one of the things that often happens is bring in a surrogate victim. So for example, if you had a group of offenders who had all committed drunk driving with injuries, it would be bringing someone in from the outside who himself or herself was a victim of a drunk driving incident, or maybe had a relative who was, you know, hurt. And this victim would talk to the offenders about what those harms were in real life. What does it feel to be a victim when that kind of thing happens to you? So I think that perhaps I will stop there because I want to allow plenty of time for the others to share with you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir, for your contributions today. I'd like to give an opportunity out to Ms. Christina Noket.
Hi, good afternoon, senators. I'm Christina Noket, the executive director for Inafamalik. First of all, I want to thank Speaker Wampat, Senator Munya Barnes, and Senator Yamashita for introducing this bill. And reiterate that Inafamalik has been doing restorative justice in Guam since nineteen ninety-four. And in fact, to increase the number of volunteer mediators within our organization with the skills needed to do restorative justice, and under the guidance and expertise of our founder and president emeritus, Patrick Wolf, we've actually developed a training course entitled PY four nine four, Applied Social Psychology of Conflict Resolution: Restorative Justice. This is a one-credit course that has been approved by the University of Guam and is offered as a special needs course through the professional programs, professional international programs. This course provides an overview of social psychology, social psychological and legal foundations for the use of the applied conflict resolution theory, specifically mediation techniques in the restorative justice, which is a system in which prescreened perpetrators of crimes and the victims of these crimes participate with trained volunteers in a highly structured meeting with the goal of holistic and emotionally satisfying reconciliations. And specific types of cases which restorative justice-based mediations may be applied include offenses committed under the influence of alcohol, e.g., drunk driving, minor theft, and vandalism. We look forward, Inafamalik looks forward to being available to offer training to the community in this specialized area so that we do have a larger pool of trained and qualified persons in Guam in which to draw, you know, further restorative justice programs on the island. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Noket. I'd also like to invite Attorney Carol Hinko Sanchez, who understands and would like to also provide some testimony, as well as some recommendations. She'll be after Mr. Dioro, but next on the list, we have Ms. Titanneau.
Hafiday, honorable senators, my name is Michelle Titanneau, for the record, as per housekeeping rules. Donkloona Sedusmasi to Senators Judith, Tina, and Aline for introducing bill two one six dash three two, an act relative to enacting principles of balance and restorative justice in the juvenile criminal justice system between the victim and offender. As chairperson of the Guam Parole Board, I support this bill. I believe when we are able to assist in correcting especially criminal types of behaviors at an early age, our juveniles have a greater opportunity at avoiding adult incarceration. Recent studies show treatment rather than incarceration for certain offenses is more effective and successful at achieving life without crime. Restorative justice, an alternative to sentencing, may aid the offender in identifying, acknowledging the wrongfulness of an offense and bring a better understanding of actions and consequences. Regarding section three implementation, please, I request your consideration to amend the current language beginning in line item four through eight. I propose the following. Judicial law and judicial and law enforcement officials shall develop and employ restorative justice approaches whenever feasible and responsive to criminal acts include involving juveniles. That these approaches also include involvement and participation of the parents, guardians, extended families, as necessary. An offense, whether minor or serious, is still an offense and needs to be dealt with accordingly. When administered properly, the restorative justice process could work at any level of intensity. Restorative justice is a great process in bringing peace to victims, offenders, and their families. As lessons are learned through such processes, the greater goal and hope is a juvenile life transformed for success with a bright future consisting of self-sustainability, the opportunity to raise and support a family, and be a positive contributor to our island community. And I just want to say, add a couple more things. I was actually in one of Pat's first, if not the first, restorative justice at UOG many moons ago, and I really learned a lot from that. Also, Senator Respechio had, a few years ago, also had asked the Guam Parole Board to move in restorative justice, which we try to incorporate, even as Pat was saying, at post-incarceration, post-sentencing. And if we can do that, we usually try to work with that. And lastly, restorative justice is really cost-effective in savings to the government. You know, if you can fix it outside instead of having to throw it into our lacking, our system, which is hurting, but, and look for alternative ways, I think it's best for our government. Donkloona Sedusmasi. Sedus infin bisi infin benadecial.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Dioro, Art? Hafiday, senators.
I too am a graduate of Pat Wolf's PY four ninety-four restorative justice course. And I've been a mediator and a board member for Inafamalik since two thousand and four. I first got involved with Inafamalik as an assistant principal at John F. Kennedy High School. We had instituted peer mediation program at the school. And I noticed that there were other cases that we would refer directly to the criminal justice system, such as riots, theft, criminal sexual conduct. And these cases, as most of you know, would normally call for that student to be put through the Discipline Advisory Council Committee. And normally what happens is that that student is either sent to DYA or through the criminal system. And what happens most often times is they don't return back to the school. One of the first cases that we did work on at JFK was a riot involving twelve girls. And it happened during lunch, at the end of lunch. And it just caused a major upheaval. We had to call the police, we had to cut lunch short. And it was a case that was perfect for restorative justice. Normally, what would have happened to these girls is they would have all been sent through the DAC and either expelled or sent to alternative school. But what we ended up doing was we worked with Inafamalik and bringing in four mediators on a Saturday afternoon, and the parents, and all the girls. And we went through the restorative justice group conference. And what I noticed after this event was that I didn't see very many of these girls after that. So that's an anecdotal evidence of what can happen with restorative justice. And to this day, I see quite a few of them out in the community, you know, doing well in, and most of them have graduated from JFK. One of the other cases that involved theft was between these two boys. One who had stolen a wallet from one of the other boys and denied it. The teacher said, "Well, you know, I'm pretty sure it was him." Well, we found out it was him. And this was a case that was ripe, again, for restorative justice. So I called both parents in and they agreed to come in. What ended up happening was the boy who stole the wallet admitted to it and agreed with his father to pay the restitution. And immediately after that, during, at the end of the conference, the victim's father and the victim himself felt that this was a good enough evidence to them that the boy should be reinstated back to school. And so instead of sending him again through the criminal justice system or through DYA, the boy returned to school after his ten-day suspension. The most, the largest case that we did do with restorative justice involved criminal sexual conduct at the school. And it involved a victim who at first was very hesitant to go through this process. Uh, she eventually agreed to it and her parents and the boy's parents and guardian and also community members involved, uh, with the case, like the teachers, the counselors, all attended the session. Um, what, what I, I really saw at the end of that session was that the, the offender saw the light in that his, what his actions were through the, the voicing of all the other opinions uh, and how his actions affected all of them, from the counselor to the teacher, uh, and especially with the, with the victim. So, uh, again, uh, this restorative justice conference by involving the community members as well, um, shows how restorative justice can work. And, um, uh, what I found out later about this boy is I used to see him quite often in my office uh, for different kinds of infractions such as skipping, uh, fighting and, you know, the normal, um, uh, uh, infractions that, uh, most young men who had, don't have very, uh, good focus uh, end up, uh, going through, uh, at school. Well, uh, it turns out that he graduated and went into the military and, you know, is a now, uh, a productive member of society. So it, in just those three years that, uh, we were able to, uh, use restorative justice, um, at the school system, I felt that, uh, uh, that it, it does work and I saw it firsthand. And so I would like to provide my support, uh, for the passage of this bill and, uh, and encourage, um, the further use, uh, of it in the, in the, not only through the criminal justice system, but also, uh, the continued use at, at the Department of Education. As this is another tool that we can use to, to continue, uh, to have students uh, not go through the criminal justice system and not be, uh, suspended, continually being suspended and, uh, taken out of, uh, of the schools. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Art. You know, just your testimony real quick is making me glance at this thing and wonder if we should include education officials. But we'll, we'll work on that at the committee level. Thank you very much. Um, Carol?
Good afternoon. Sorry, apologize. Um, good afternoon, senators. I'm Carol Hinkle Sanchez, uh, deputy attorney general at the Office of the Attorney General. Um, overall, our office supports the intent of the legislation. Uh, we've actually utilized restorative justice, um, in many cases. You know, I've heard, um, the numerous cases that Attorney Wolf mentioned, um, and that's through the juvenile justice courts, uh, the family courts. And basically, um, as you can see, this process is already embedded in, in our system, uh, even without the legislation. Um, so it's embedded within the ju- the family court system because those are things that we, we've utilized. Um, Mr. Or- De Oro had mentioned, um, you know, utilizing it through the Department of Education and we totally support that as well. Um, we want to, we want to note first of all, you know, with this legislation, it does apply to juveniles. That's, that's what we're here, that's what I'm here to testify on is that it's specifically for juvenile cases. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna ask, one, the first recommendation is that this, this matter be placed under Title nineteen, chapter five, which is the, uh, Family Court Act, um, because that's probably where it's most suiting. Um, I did look at other jurisdictions and statutes as well prior to coming here, um, and that's where it's placed. Um, I, um, I know a lot of jurisdictions have not incorporated actual legislation, um, like this. I think there were seventeen as of, I, I looked at a report as of two thousand and eight, um, that have incorporated this into their actual legislation. It doesn't mean they don't use it. It means it's probably like, like on Guam, it's embedded within our system and there are certain cases we will refer. Um, and I, and, and as Pat was just telling me early on, you know, I've used NAFAMALIC, uh, often when I was at Guam Legal and in the, in the, in cases that we've had before the court where, you know, these minors are going to be in the same school. They're gonna have to find a way to get along and, and come to some, some terms so there's no other conflict that arises. And so, um, looking at, looking at the other statutes, um, I think the, um, most pressing statute or the model statute was Pennsylvania. And Pennsylvania, what they did, I'm sorry, apologize, in, uh, the Pennsylvania statute, all they did was they incorporated, um, this process under the purpose section of, um, of the family court, their Family Court Act, which is called their Juvenile Justice Act. And basically, uh, what it does is it, it leaves open rooms so that you can develop procedures and policies. And sometimes there are new trends that come up. And as I mentioned, along the ways, you know, it's an emerging trend, so there's so much different ideas and so much different approaches to restorative justice. Um, Pennsylvania uses the, um, I guess the balanced approach and restorative justice process. Um, and basically the balanced, uh, balanced approach is what we're, we're kind of trying to incorporate. And like I said, they mentioned they added into their purpose section. I want to note that, um, we actually, we actually have a, um, an executive order and I, and I know Attorney Wolf is aware of it. Um, the executive order two thousand and eight, um, dash fifteen or fourteen, I think? Two thou- two thousand and eight dash fourteen, it was signed into, um, effect July tenth, two thousand and eight by Felix Camacho. And basically it, um, it creates the Law Commission of Juvenile Justice. We've actually, um, there are named agencies like Department of Youth Affairs, um, Superior Courts. Actually, the court systems are in it, legislatures, compilers, one public school system, the police department, uh, DP, uh, mental health and public health. Other agencies like my office, um, and, and various, um, child protective services, we all became a part of this task force. It's currently spearheaded by Vice Speaker Cruz. Um, I was actually supposed to call a meeting and, and have the members come back. But if, if you look at this executive order, restorative justice is actually one of the mandates under it, um, under subsection two, D and E. And so it, it talks about, um, you know, restorative justice practices, developing, developing restorative justice practices as well as, uh, diversionary and prevention programs. And the, this commission actually, um, worked closely with it. We've actually had some of those tasks and goals already in mind, um, and we were already going to work on it. So, so certainly you can see that we're moving in that course of, of developing this type of program to incorporate into the, the system so that there are consistent, uh, policies. When we do, um, decide, you know, to do this, we also have to look at the approach of what, um, what other, if, if necessary, training, and they mentioned some training, the manpower to do it, um, and the cost to fund it. Because when people do go to NAFAMALIC, there, they do bear a cost to attend, to, to attend the mediation. Am I not correct?
There is a, there is a, a fee, however. Oh, there, there is a, a small fee that NAFAMALIC charges, but the Superior Court has been very gracious with, uh, restorative justice cases since the beginning. So the court has always paid those fees, so individuals have not had to pay them.
And so that, I mean, basically, you know, that, that's where we need to ensure that there is going to be funding, whether, you know, there's an, a special allocated funding that's going to be used strictly for restorative justice, um, anyone. Because as you know, these are minors and just to get restitutions difficult, you know, for some cases. And now, uh, if they are going to have to bear a cost, um, I would think that certainly victims shouldn't have to bear the cost of, um, of this. And so that's one area that when we do look at this legislation, we need to ensure we address, is that it's got, there is going to be a cost associated with it. And right now, the courts are, are doing it, um, you know, and, and I, I know that they see that there's, that, you know, it's, it's important. But whether or not they're going to have that cost and whether or not it's, it's going to be available in the future is, is a total different question. Um, and so that's, that's where we have to look at it as well. Um, another area that, you know, I wanted to also suggest, um, is on the recommendations we're going to be making under, um, section three, um, is basically rather than having, um, judicial and law enforcement officials be, um, be there, maybe we can have the Law Review Commission that is mandated under this executive order. Since we're already working on that, uh, as one of our projects, uh, maybe the Law Revision Commission can be, um, assigned this task. And I only say that because we don't want to leave it to judicial and law enforcement, most especially when we're dealing with offenders and victims, because we don't want victims to be pressured because it is a policy coming out of the court. You know, we don't want victims to feel pressured that they need to go through this or participate in it. And we don't want any bias, you know, within the community between offenders or victims that, you know, this is a, a judicial process that they feel they need to do. Uh, because we do want to keep it at, you know, at, as, not as a mandatory, uh, approach, but, uh, um, you know, voluntary approach of the victim. And so, uh, we would rather have the Law Commission, uh, be tasked to develop these, these policies as we have been currently working on it. And again, I apologize, I was going to call a meeting, but as you can see, GPD is busy, CPS is busy, DOE is busy. We're all busy right now and it's hard to get us to regroup and, uh, work on it. But I did speak with Vice Speaker and Sarah Thomas Nederdog, who at the time was also a part of the commission. And, and I did tell them that I, I wanted to call back the commission because some of the actual legislations that we were working on are actually now before the floor, like amendments to the sex offender registry, the automatic certification, and now this one. So these are things we've worked on and they're now becoming before the senators. And so it's important that they're aware of these changes too, so they can provide input to you guys on their part. And basically, again, uh, on the same section three, um, if you go down and it's, it's at the, it is further the intent of the, um, legislatures that restorative justice programs be designed to encourage participation from the community, including the victims when they so choose. And again, if we can strike out judicial and law enforcement officials and rather put and ensure that the juvenile justice system, um, so we're gonna hold it, you know, as a whole, because as you know, when a kid enters into the system, it isn't just judicial and law, law enforcement anymore. We have social service workers, uh, we have a whole process, mental health workers. Um, so, so if we can put down, we can strike out judicial and law enforcement officials and just put and ensure that the juvenile justice system holds all offenders accountable for the damages caused to the communities, um, victims, and in restoring offender to law-abiding instead of community citizens. So those are my particular changes to that. Um, with respect to section four, um, I also wanted to add some language just to clarify, um, in section four. And the reason is because I, I heard some of Pat's testimony about the, the difference between sentencing and disposition. In our world, we actually use the word disposition. Uh, we don't use, uh, convicted, we use, you know, adjudicated. So our languages are different from the adult prosecution. And because this is focused on juvenile, um, the, the appropriate term would be disposition. We can keep sentence there, disposition or sentence, because sometimes you do, we, we kind of hear this, the word sentence anyways. Um, but if we can clarify that section to read, instead of a court, it'll be a family judge, a family court judge. Because under our Family Court Act, juveniles appear, unless they're charged as adults, they will appear under a specialized court, which is the family court. So title, um, as you can see, title nineteen, chapter five says Family Court Act. So if we can put a family court judge, um, and then comma, when considering the disposition or sentencing, sentenced to be imposed against a juvenile. And then what I did was I struck for an offense. From the word four, I struck it all the way to violence. And instead of using that, juvenile offender whose case has been referred and court ordered to the restorative justice program. Because basically, um, as you can see in section three, it's limited, which we, we totally, um, support the limitations to certain crimes, um, because we don't want serious crimes to be, um, just automatically deferred into restorative justice unless true, the victim is truly, there's some relationship that means it's going to be that way. Because, you know, part of this whole restorative justice system is accountability. I mean, that's the main thing. Uh, aside from restoring, restoring victims and the community whole, there's also still that accountability part that is so important and, and you'll see through many of the restorative justice, um, programs across the jurisdictions that have incorporated, you know, accountability is by far, accountability and competency is, is really important when it comes to, uh, offenders entering into this system. Um, and then again, I changed the sentence portion, I just added disposition or sentence. And then when you get to, um, if I can look at the statute so I can refer you to the right line, because mine's, um, when you get to the section where, um, it talks about, num- line eighteen on page two where it ends at "community if there is no victim", I went ahead and added that "any negotiated agreement made by the parties shall be submitted to the assigned family court judge by the facilitator or mediator handling the restorative justice program." And the reason I put that is we want to preserve confidentiality again. You know, I, I heard Pat talk about confidentiality. Uh, many times, oftentimes, mental health, you know, DYA, when they submit documents or, or confidential things, it's submitted directly to the judge. And then at that time, the judge can just, um, you know, give it to the, um, attorneys in that matter. And it, again, it's just merely for the purpose of confidentiality, to keep this agreement confidential. Um, and, and the only reason I, I ask that these recommendations be incorporated is because I want to make it clear that, you know, these matters are only, I don't want all victims. If you look at the original language, I don't want every victim in a case where restorative justice isn't appropriate making agreements with the defendant and submitting it to the court. And, you know, the court's going to feel bound to accept that, that as part of its disposition versus those that are actually court ordered to attend restorative justice. You know, sometimes you have cases where the government's going to object to restorative justice based on the crime that's being charged, criminal sexual conduct of family members, siblings. And so we're, you know, we would be opposing this type of approach in those particular cases, especially where, you know, siblings, brother made a sister pregnant, kind of, um, scenario, and we've had those cases. So, you know, I, I, we want, we, I just wanted the clarification to ensure that this applies to court ordered mediation, that written agreements between victims and offenders are not being handed to the judge by the victim or offender unless it's signed off, because they will give, be given copies unless it's signed off by a mediator. And the mediator will provide it to the court to ensure that the consistency is there, that that was the agreement reached during mediation. Um, it's just, um, it's really, you know, an area that we want to ensure that, um, is clear because we don't want every victim and offender coming into the system, giving us all kinds of recommendations and going against what we believe is, you know, going to hold this, this offender accountable. Um, and basically, that's pretty much about all that I have, um, with respect to the amendments. I can send you a cleaner copy. I know I kind of was striking everything all over the place there. But, um, again, you know, we, we support the intent. We definitely have used this, uh, restorative justice in our, in our current system. It's already embedded in the process. There isn't any, um, with this, it'll be a little more clear as to what cases can be, um, referred into mediation or restorative justice. Um, it kind of labels out the cases and we certainly agree with the limitations set forth in this, in this, um, in this document and the fact that it is going to be based on the victim's approval, you know, based on the victim's voluntary, um, determination of, of utilizing this service. Because that's so important in some crimes, you know, victims can't be forced to engage in this type of mediation such as family violence. It would go against some of our stop grants. And, um, you know, part of the stop grant is, and, and, and fund, federal funding for, for family violence cases prohibits, you know, forcing a victim to engage in, in mediation services. And so we just don't want to compromise that and ensure that if this is going to be used by the victim, it's the victim's voluntary consent to do it. Um, aside from that, you know, I just want to point out, I've mentioned through our budget hearings that our office also does the pre, the diversionary program. We offer pre-adjudicatory diversionary program, which is another, um, alternative means of restorative justice. That's a program that's actually very informal, um, because it never goes before the judge. It's determined based on first-time offenders of petty misdemeanor or misdemeanor crimes. And basically, if they're a first-time offender and they don't, um, have any prior offenses, then they would be able to, um, utilize the pre-adjudicatory diversionary program. Where I want to, like I said, regroup the, the, the Law Revision Commission only because the only way we're going to make that effective is if, if we work with our, collaboratively with the Guam Police Department and probation, because those are the three parties really involved in, um, the PDP program. And we just need reports to come in timely so that we can contact, because it, it's a matter of contacting the offenders and seeing if they want to voluntarily, it's again, voluntarily enter into this program. And so that's another program that, that you'll see in other jurisdictions that is part of the restorative justice process. So I just wanted to point that out because, you know, we do support this, although, you know, a lot of jurisdictions, again, don't have the legislation, they, they, it is embedded within the system. And, and even if it's not a crime that's listed here, if a judge believes that, the courts are very good, they're trained in the, in the juvenile justice, um, I guess they go off filing for juvenile justice training. But within our juvenile justice system, they're very good at recognizing if cases need to be referred to counseling or mediation. And so even if it isn't within the, the class- classifications that's mentioned in the statute, they, they, they're also permitted to, you know, request that and, and also allow it if, if the parties are going to be in agreement. So even if, like, you know, the cases they mentioned, like DUIs or where there's injuries or, um, and, and I bring that up because sometimes we have injuries of DUI and then we have a ho- a negligent homicide or, or some type of homicide and it's actually brothers or cousins in the car. And the driver is still alive, but the passenger happens to be his cousin or brother or relative. And, you know, those are really, really emotional cases for the family. And so, you know, I, I think that's what these guys were mentioning, the restorative justice factor. But again, you know, in our, in our world, in the prosecution world, you know, that would be something that, you know, would be left to the judge, at least in, in the juvenile side. And that's why it's not, although it's not necessarily part of this, the classifications brought in this crimes. brought in this crimes, it's something the judge could still consider. These are just, this helps, because this will tell us what automatically would qualify as a restorative justice case, versus just letting, flat-out letting all crimes be a part of it. We don't want every crime to say we want restorative justice, when, again, it's not gonna serve the purpose of what the juvenile justice system is about. And so, we appreciate that you guys kind of classified some crimes, and kept it at the crimes that are, that we can see dealing with restorative justice versus flat-out making it all crimes, which would be harder on the system, because everyone's gonna be requesting, we're gonna have so many victims and offenders submitting, you know, disposition for us to look at, and so, other than that, we support the legislation, the intent of it, and I'll send you a copy of the changes that we have.
Thank you very much, Carolyn, thank you everybody for your contributions today, a lot of very good input and testimony. I'd like to take the opportunity now to allow my colleagues to present any questions or comments. Mr. Vice Chair?
I just have several questions. First of all, Ms. Sanchez, you indicated, right now, I guess you have that executive order, which has pretty much embodied, or given grounds for this type of action, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, we're basically, probably the bill should be looking at that executive order as a point of departure, and using the law basically to codify what's in there, and to add to it. But the other question that I, so is that correct?
That, pretty much, you know, this, and I'll give it to him to hand over. This executive order, we have other duties as well, those are two of the specified duties under the Commission. We actually, I know, I think Pat had met with us several times at my Speaker's office on restorative justice, it was something we were looking at, and again, you know, we kind of submitted our first report to the Governor at the time, I think it was a couple of years ago, but I wanted to regroup, because like I said, a lot of things have already came before the Senators, that I've been calling certain agencies to let them know that it's going forward. But basically, what I wanted to get at is, you know, if you are gonna move forward with this legislation, because a lot of jurisdictions, if you look at it, they actually, like Pennsylvania, for example, they actually incorporated this type of legislation, just amending the purpose section of the Juvenile Justice Act, which is our Family Court Act. They amended it to show that, you know, the intent of the juvenile justice system is going to incorporate restorative justice in some way, and that the policies will be developed, and then they throw it out to some committee. So, that's what I'm saying, is if we move forward on this legislation, it's pretty open-ended right now, enough for me to say that if you change the judicial law enforcement officials to the Law Revision Commission, that it would be similar to what Pennsylvania has. It kind of leaves the door open for the committee or the Commission to develop these protocols and procedures, because we do want consistent procedures in determining which offenders are going to be allowed restorative justice, and how, you know, would be done. You know, like he mentioned with the Department of Education, I totally, fully support that, and I say that because I've been pressing on that issue for some time, and the reason is because a lot of cases don't come to us, a lot of cases, there isn't police intervention, and if there is, we haven't gotten the report, and so, these kids are still in the same school, hanging out around the same place, you know, and I don't wanna wait for another crime to occur between these two groups that are still in the same school. So, a lot of times, you know, administrative action is taken, but police intervention isn't, and that would be a perfect time to have restorative justice right there, you know, and these petty, like bullying cases that are happening, where it's verbal, or teasing, or name-calling, even at the younger age group, even at the elementary level, that's the perfect opportunity for restorative justice. So, that's why leaving this, leaving this the way it is, it kind of allows this, the Law Revision Commission to move forward and developing, and working with the other agencies that are all part of this Commission, to develop those types of approaches, whether it's, you know, if there was police intervention, this is what we're gonna do, you know, whether it's, if there isn't any police intervention, it's within the schools, this is how they're gonna do it, you know. And then, and seeking funding, you know, we're gonna come right back to that funding issue of, you know, how are we gonna fund restorative justice? You know, in the school system, it might be a simple task, you know, they can train the educational professional with these courses, you know, there'll be certain designated professionals in each school that have been given this training, that are ready to be facilitators and mediators in that school. Again, it's a matter of sitting down, once this is done, however, whichever approach we're gonna take, when this is done, you know, we can sit down and develop those policies and procedures, it's, we just need something consistent. You know, even with the current system we have, the diversionary program, you know, we're still trying to seek consistency, because if we get a police report really late, and the date to appear in court is like the next day or a week, we have a hard time calling families to get to our office to, you know, to sign documents, so we don't have to charge them out, you know, if they don't come on time, we have no choice but to charge them. Then, once they're in the system, it's hard for us to drop it out, and, thank you, it's hard for us to, you know, drop the case and move them into the informal course, because we're already now in a formal proceeding. So, in those cases, we can see restorative justice benefiting as well.
I just want to kinda give my general reaction to this whole concept here. First of all, I think it seems like a very practical way of somewhat providing a, like a relief valve, I guess, to the judicial system, if we can take care of it before we actually, you know, go much further, getting lawyers and everybody involved, then I think this is great. On the other hand, though, just the way the bill is written, I do have some concerns with the language, for example, that it is not gonna be applicable to, like, when serious family violence is concerned. And how do you distinct, I mean, family violence, I guess, is family violence, and where do you, you know, draw the line as to it's serious or it's not serious? Or serious, serious crimes against persons or property? And again, it's just, you know, how we describe, how we qualify what's gonna be basically a candidate for that. The other, I guess the other thing, and it's just kind of an initial reaction, is that when Mr. Wolf was explaining the process about how, first of all, it's the defendant that must agree to go through this process, and if he or she agrees to it, then we approach the plaintiff to see whether they would agree to that process, and it's kinda like, I'm victimized in the first place, now we're making concessions to see whether, you know, you wanna go through this, or, as opposed to saying, well, why don't you give me that first right of first refusal, and if I'm amenable to that, then, and if I'm not, then don't even waste your time, you know, with the defendant, if that's gonna be, you know, my position.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing that, Senator, and I don't think there's necessarily a right or wrong here, but we've looked into that pretty carefully, and most of the programs all around the country approach the offender first, and it's actually because of a victim sensitivity that it's done. It's done because no one wants to raise expectations of the victim if you don't have an offender who is accepting, first of all, admitting what he's done, and then accepting responsibility for what he's done, and wants to make it right. So, we wanna assure, ensure that we have that in place before we bother the victim, because we don't wanna build up expectations that we can't deliver on. So, that's really what's happening there.
And if I may, just to clarify, I know you raised the concerns about family violence and criminal sexual conduct, and as I mentioned, you know, in those particular cases, I too, you know, because of our federal grants, we do receive a huge amount of stop money and some other federal grants that are provided to our nonprofits and government agencies, and I don't wanna compromise that as well. But again, you know, this just basically gives us the initial phase to develop protocols, so as we meet as a team, the Law Review Commission meets as a team, we can develop those protocols and identify the crimes that will be able to be a part of restorative justice, so that, you know, there's that list that's an automatic, you know, that, okay, this case, if it comes and it's a first-time offense, you know, like, you know, theft of a neighbor, you know, we have neighbor cases, I'll give you an example, we have neighbor cases, you know, an older man, they stole his bush cutter, or whatnot, you know, things at his house, TV, they're juveniles that happen to be, they know this guy, they talked to him, they hang out with him when he's outside, and, you know, the neighbor, the adult male neighbor ends up saying, I really feel bad for these kids, you know, they're actually really good kids, I talk to them all the time, I just don't know why they stole my stuff, kinda thing. So, he kinda wants the restorative justice, he kinda wants to, he understands we need to proceed, because we need to hold these people accountable. So, you know, we would be able to label those crimes, you know, this basically just says, you know, Law Review Commission, you know, employ these protocols as to how we're gonna handle restorative justice in the juvenile justice system. So, what we'll do is we'll label out crimes, and, you know, for the crimes such as family violence, where it's mother and son, son is the perpetrator, mother's the victim, because we have those cases, you know, those are the cases that will go to counseling, because the only place the son is gonna go is back home, and mom is there. So, those are, you know, those are cases that will be the exception to the family violence, you know, they will have to engage in some type of counseling along the way because of the relationship of the victim and the offender. So, it's not gonna be every case, but it's going to, you know, it'll allow us the ability to develop these policies that will determine which cases will be permissible to enter into restorative justice. As for the other cases, again, you know, the courts do have discretion, the beauty of the family court is, pretty much the courts have a lot of discretion to do a lot of things, and if they believe, you know, based on, you know, offender and maybe even victim statements made to our office or to victim advocates, you know, they can decide at that time, outside of this, outside of these crimes that we classify as, you know, eligible for restorative justice, they can decide on those other crimes on the bench, and determine whether or not any measures of counseling or treatment will be needed at that time. I hope you kind of got what I...
Senator?
May I interject with that, along those lines, just on a different note, you know, Guam's such a small community where a lot of us are families, and ma'am, in all due respect, I kinda agree with that, you know, some serious crimes, and Senator, about which crimes are serious and not, I was just thinking that we could just leave it open-ended, and not to negate the severity of the crime, and the potential of the consequence, whether he needs, the offender needs to make up in whatever way, I just would, maybe even just putting it in there and giving the option for both offender and victim, whether, at whatever level, whether it's serious or not, to be able to do restorative justice, so that, because even there's some cases, you know, uncle and criminal sexual conduct, uncle versus niece, they're still family, and they may not go back to the same house that day, but eventually, they're gonna have some kind of family gathering, and they're gonna need to be, come to some kind of reconciliation, or that's the hope, anyway. And, you know, people can heal, and people do heal, and I think it's just that we could consider giving that option for everyone, but not to take away, ma'am, the prosecution side is, you know, as far as making that good. And, okay, thank you.
Again, I just wanted to clarify, so that you understand, what we're doing is, we're actually identifying, what we're gonna do is, when we develop these policies, we're gonna identify crimes that we automatically believe should go through restorative justice, okay? So, it's easier for the system, you have this crime come before the court, it's automatically gonna go to restorative justice, versus other crimes where the court, at his or her discretion, based on victims, based on offenders, based on treatment, because the offender's gonna go through treatment, and, you know, the treatment providers are gonna provide the court with recommendations, as well as what the offender has stated, based on that, the court can, you know, allow for restorative justice. It's not a mandatory, it's not an automatic, it's, you know, it's something the court may decide at its discretion, that's, and again, we're just here for juveniles, so I can't really speak on behalf of adults, they may share a different sentiment than I do, because, you know, those are totally different things. Our system is about, you know, restoring, and being able to bring these juveniles back into the community so they don't reoffend. Our system's about rehabilitation and treatment, and that's the juvenile justice system, and that's why this may, you know, I mean, it's something that's already embedded in our system, because that's what we do, we treat, we rehabilitate, you know, and this is part of the treatment process, and it's always been. But this will allow us the opportunity to develop, you know, consistent protocol, and what can automatically jump, like I said, you know, in PDPs, there's automatic cases that will go to the PDP program. The problem is we don't get police reports sometimes as early as we want it to happen, so, you know, that's something we're working on with the Guam Police Department, but this would allow us to develop those protocols. The court has its own discretion, it'll make its decisions based on treatment providers, reports, and all kinds of other stuff, and so, those things can be dealt with through the court. I'm just saying, there's some things that, you know, we can automatically pinpoint that should go to restorative, like the rioting case, you know, and also, you know, allowing us to employ and develop protocols for the Department of Education, you know, that these cases should automatically have restorative justice, you know, especially where you don't have police intervention, you should already be thinking about restorative justice, yeah.
Yeah, I think we kinda get the idea of, you know, we're gonna eventually need to bring the other people to the table, to the Commission and everything like that, but Senator Yamashita is one of the co-authors present, I wanted to give you the next opportunity, do you have any questions or comments? Senator Uggan?
Sure. I just wanna thank everyone for the testimony this afternoon, I think that when we've seen the successes of treatment courts, and I see restorative justice being applied to the criminal system here on island, I think that that's also another avenue that certainly can be entertained. I guess one question I do have in terms of possibly looking at the implementation of this, shouldn't the line of first defense on behalf of the people of Guam be extended to the AG's office in terms of rendering decisions, whether this individual would be eligible for restorative justice, that particular process? And then, obviously, confiding with the attorney of the alleged offender, and then eventually either bringing it to the judge, or having things simmered down at that particular level? I'm just looking at where the initial empowerment on behalf of the people of Guam would come in.
And you're totally correct, Senator Uggan, you know, when we had the pre-adjudicatory diversionary program, we were encountering some problems, and, you know, I think it was a bit of not really collaborating at the time, but, you know, sometimes cases were being referred to Sanctuary or other agencies for treatment without our knowledge. When I found out about it, of course, I intervened, because when a case is charged, or when a determination is made, you're right, it's prosecutorial discretion that should be left with our office, in determining whether or not cases should be either in a, you know, again, you know, whether it should go through the diversionary program, whether it should go through a restorative justice, it is a prosecutorial discretion as to that type of disposing of a crime. And so, what was happening there, and this is what I brought up, is if you don't leave it with us, and we don't have the informal agreement between the agencies that are necessary, who's gonna monitor this person? You know, you can send them to Sanctuary, but who at the end is going to ensure that they've completed all their counseling and all their treatment? So, with the PDP, probation does it, we engage in an informal service with probation, a document that's in writing, the offender signs it, the parents sign as well, they waive all rights to court hearings and whatnot, and if they don't complete the terms, then they waive the right to contest the actual charge being brought against them, and probation monitors everything they need to do, community service, counseling, treatment, whatever. And so, you're right, Senator, that ultimate discretion should be within our office. In these particular cases, though, with restorative justice, we should have already charged it out, that's the important thing to know about this particular statute, is that these should apply to cases in the court system already. So, these are the cases that actually have been charged, the minors already before a judge, and that is that at this point, we can determine whether or not, when they're before the judge, restorative justice would be appropriate. The cases that are not charged will be the diversionary program we have, and so, that's why when we employ these policies and procedures, we'll lay it all out, that basically, for the kids that are not charged, you know, we have the pre-adjudicatory diversionary, for those that have been charged, this would apply, the restorative justice portion.
I think just to close out on my comments, and Mr. Chairman, my question is, first and foremost, I would see, we'll see if we can get some feedback from the judiciary in terms of participating in this conversation, because certainly, they're gonna be a critical part of this whole process. But the juvenile drug court, as an example, it's a diversionary program, and it allows these individuals to go through these entire trainings, as well as comply with certain restrictions and guidelines for a timeline of anywhere from eight to twelve months. The recidivism rate just for that group alone, obviously, there's pre-qualifications, it's about seventeen percent, which is slightly lower than the national average, and one of the things we certainly wanna do is we wanna move in this particular direction, but I'm glad you brought up the fact that there may be some costs incurred as a result of implementing this and allowing it to be utilized on a much larger scale, because the judiciary at this point in time does utilize it to some extent, but if in fact, we're gonna involve the entire community to a much larger scale, whether it be Department of Education, the school environment, whether it be some of the law enforcements, then certainly, that may trickle into investing some additional resources, so that we can reinforce, like, for example, the probation office, because I know for a fact that many of the probation offices right now, at this point in time, are overly tasked, and certainly, we don't wanna burden them to the point where this program, if implemented, is not carried out successfully. So, I appreciate you sharing that particular perspective, and we certainly will see what we can do to get the judiciary involved in this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Adah?
Sure.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, Mr. Sanchez, I, I have to agree with you that I, I don't think all, all crimes fit the bill and that, um, those are things that really need to be worked out. Um, maybe for, for truancy and things like that where, you know, and Mr. Dioro said you're right, you know, I mean, you know, take care of it at the school level, you know, I mean, we need to stop sending children back to DYA for truancy, we need to stop sending children to DYA for beyond control. Those are things that can be taken care of at home, that, those are things that can be taken care of by the education system, you know, and let's look into this further. But I think for, for the most part, when you come to serious crimes and, you know, whether we, we ca- we're calling it serious crimes or not serious crimes, uh, I think anything criminal sexual conduct and things like that, I, I believe that, you know, the victim has to be, I mean, we wanna ensure that we're, we're giving the services to the perpetrator. But at the same token, who watches out for the victim? So, I un- and I understand the, uh, restorative justice, but I think we need to also look at the victims. And this is why, you know, I, when, when you were just saying that with not all crimes, and I, I totally agree with you, not all crimes. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada, Senator Yamaschita.
If I can just stress on, um, Senator Ada's point and basically, you're right, in the CSC crimes, you, you will find that, um, in experience based on like where there's brother and sister, you have a lot of pressure being placed on the victim by family members. Um, and so that's, that's really the hard part, you know, is, is yeah, you gotta choose between the siblings, but at the same time, most of the time, the victims re, re-offending, you know, the, the offense is happening multiple times. Because now we have parents and family members forcing the victim to, uh, to accept what happened and, and so, you know, you know, it's certainly something we, we wanna look at as, as a team. And through counseling, again, you know, treatment providers, they, they actually guide the courts to whatever other decisions need to be made and so I just want you to be aware that, you know, those things are being put before the court. And how the court approaches it and how our office is gonna approach it is, is, is going to be different. Um, you know, and that's why we should leave those to the courts to handle, but you're right, you know, we don't want victims to be pressured in any way.
Thank you, um, Senator Yamaschita, if you don't mind, I believe Senator Yamashita does have something she'd like to, to, okay, thank you, Senator Yamaschita, Senator Yamashita.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you all for being at your legislature, I, I, I was listening and I'm very familiar of a lot of the, the work, the work and the heartache and the heartbreak, uh, that you go through and that's why I was listening. But I really, as Senator, um, Tony raises his issues, I, I do wanna say that, you know, today, we're in a, we're in a very scary place. And the crimes that have been committed the last two weeks, uh, have a lot of us talking about what is going on and what is not going on. And so, uh, certainly, uh, we have a lot of work to do in early childhood education in, uh, families, uh, in our faiths, uh, and, and just all coming together. But, you know, Carol has said it repeatedly, uh, that it, it has to be everybody coming together, it can't just be a GPD issue, it cannot just be, um, the mayor's issue, it can't just be a family issue and it can't just be the teachers, it has to be all of us and we have to be smarter. And I think that's a call and I think this works for those families, that it does work and I wanna, um, assure Senator Tony Ada, Senator Ada, that I, I think when Carol says the Law Review Commission is the, is the group that needs to look at this and define the protocols, uh, with all of you. About how to best move forward, because restorative justice as art says, does work at certain levels and we, and we do know that. And Pat has been a champion for decades on this, so we do know that, right? So, but, but today Guam's in a scary place. And, you know, today, two, two people, I was, uh, getting my tire fixed and two people came up to me and said, "How, how do those people have fifteen charges against them and they're walking the streets?" And I can't answer that question because I certainly don't know enough about your worlds, but there's gotta be reasons, right? But I don't know, but, but when you have somebody simply exercising early day and then she ends up being gang raped, that's a really big, huge issue and it's not our first either. So we really need to get smart about it and what are we doing and, and so, uh, I just wanted to add that and, and, um, we do need to be smart and strategic and make sure the right people are making the decisions. But I do thank you all for saying that this does work for certain, uh, certain of us and you, you all acknowledge that. And so then we move forward and I know that Speaker Juan Pat, uh, would be most interested in, in a market and in coming together to relook at, uh, what we've, uh, addressed here, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita, and, um, again, thank you all very much for joining us today and providing some very, very insightful information with respect to this piece of legislation. And I think that everyone here kinda shares the same sentiments, we wanna make progress with restorative justice, we also wanna make sure that there's justice, you know, and that the restorative part isn't overtaking the justice part. And, uh, I, I think it's a really good thing that we're, we're actually working in this direction and that we're getting all this great feedback. Um, it's gonna help us to try and build a, a solution-oriented environment that's going to address these ongoing community concerns, but also in a manner that, that will balance out the restorative part of it with the justice part. So, again, thank you all very much for joining us today and if there's no other individuals, I'm going to testify on this, but we'll go ahead and consider it heard for the purposes of the record. So Bill number two one six dash three two is now concluded, thank you very much. We're gonna move on now to Bill number two thirty-six dash three two, um, this is introduced by, um, excuse me. Uh, Senator Yamashita, I'll go and yield to you, ma'am, to go ahead and make your opening statements.
Thank you again, um, um, Mr. Chair, for, uh, having a public hearing in an expeditious manner, I, I truly appreciate that. Bill two three six dash thirty-two, introduced by myself and the Honorable Tom Seattle, is a measure to authorize the Department of Revenue and Taxation to outsource the driver testing requirements for commercial voter, commercial motor vehicle driver's licenses. And to honor valid commercial driver's licenses obtained in the United States of America. Um, Mr. Chair, this is actually, uh, a logical follow-up for, for me when we succeeded, uh, last term in getting, um, Public Law thirty-one dash, uh, one eighty-two signed into law. And, uh, this is really about productivity and profit, it's really about public and private partnerships, it's really about helping our government agencies succeed. And at the top, I want to thank very much Director John Camacho and his folks, Marie Flores, Jesse Salas and Mr. Steve for always answering their telephone calls, our telephone calls, always answering our email and, uh, Tanya always shares with me how responsive. Uh, you know, it's, it's a response to our private sector saying, you know, we're here to do business, we wanna get on with the business and we're having, uh, uh, some time to wait for the business. And, uh, last term, uh, the wait time for our driver's licenses was at about six months. And even though we were try, we gave overtime authority and we were working Saturdays, Revenue and Tax was still stretching their, uh, resources. And so we thought we went on it to try to outsource and we have and it was but, and may we make this very clear to everybody, uh, as we do public-private partnerships and as we do outsource, the authority for this remains with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I think that's really very important, the authority remains with DRT because they're the government agency that oversees this. And so as we worked with John, uh, with Mr. Camacho on this, he's fully supportive and we thank you for that. He has certainly already given some incredible, uh, insightful feedback and we've already started some changes. Uh, we've learned certain things, I thought we had, uh, commercial driver's licenses categories, we do not at this point. Uh, so when we talk about reciprocity for our commercial driver's licenses, uh, we know we have some work to do there. But they are very open to if a person from California for certain, for example, comes to Guam and has their, uh, commercial driver's licenses, um, given by that particular state. And they're able to show DRT that they have met all those rules and regulations, they're very willing to work out procedures to honor, uh, those driver's licenses and I think that'd be very good for our businesses. Uh, so what this bill does is again gives DRT the authority to develop rules and regulations, to identify the, uh, the standards and the procedures of which they will outsource the, the driving test for our commercial vehicles. And, uh, we hope that, uh, that would help the private businesses move on with their business, uh, in partnership. I know to date that we have, uh, a few private businesses, um, employing Public Law thirty-one, one eighty-two. We know that the wait time has gone from five months to five days at Rev and Tax. We know that at some of the private businesses, you can get a, a driver test, uh, in twenty-four hours. Uh, and we know that we're getting some of that data, we're now looking at the data, we know there are concerns raised, but we also know that the, um, Department of Revenue and Tax has the auditing authority to go out and see how are we doing, what do we need to do better? And when I hear things like the passing rate's really high, my immediate response as a, as a teacher is, well, when you get closer immediate attention, you're probably gonna get better passing marks. That's just the way quality teaching works. Um, last legislation on the floor, the conversation was very, um, energetic, they made sure that the trainer and the testee are not the same company. Um, they, uh, Senator Tom had, uh, put a, that there would be at least five businesses that can have the authority to do the outsourcing. Uh, as we proceed, and again, I expect that, uh, I hope this makes it to the session floor eventually and when it does, I'm sure the same kind of deliberation will take place. Uh, everybody at the legislature is very, um, committed to, um, government service and public-private partnerships. So with that, Mr. Chair, I probably went on a little too long, um, but I wanted to give a context of how much I've already learned since we did introduce this a couple of weeks ago, thank you.
No problem, Senator Yamashita, um, we do have a, a number of individuals who signed up to testify in favor. I do understand however that, um, Mr. Camacho of Rev and Tax, uh, has also signed up to testify and, um, with the individuals who signed up to testify in favor, we'll go ahead and, um, hear Mr. Camacho. Um, he does have some technical suggestions that I wanna make sure we get on the record first, so all the senators are sharp and able to, you know, take their notes, uh, so that, um, we can make sure that these things get fully, uh, addressed. So, Mr. Camacho, if you can please, um, start us off by, uh, including your, um, your information here. And just, just to kinda preface it, you are not saying that you are in opposition to the bill, you do just have some suggestions as to how to improve it. If you can, please.
Again, good afternoon, senators, um, chairmen, members of the, uh, committee. My name is John P. Camacho, I'm the Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation and as the, um, the good Senator Yamashita introduced the bill, uh, a lot of the communications have been done between, uh, my department, which the motor vehicle department and the staff of Senator Yamashita. So they're making those changes already, so, uh, with that, I just wanna read, read out artist's money based on the original bill. So, um, an homage to the staff of Senator Aleem Yamashita for the efforts in working towards helping our department with what has been perceived as a shortfall in meeting and testing demands of the prospective commercial motor vehicle operators. Seeking an upgrade to the driver's license endorsements, we are in support of this bill with an agreement with the intent and purpose. However, after a thorough review, I believe additional work is needed to address a few issues that were discussed during the meetings held by the Senator, Chief Analyst, Ms. Tanya Mediola, which are the follows. One, Guam has not adopted the commercial driver's license program as defined in forty-nine C R, CFR parts, three eighty-three, but yet the language used throughout the bill referenced CDLC. Along with the federal provisions that enforces CDLs for commercial vehicle operators. Two, Title sixteen does not include definition of C, CDL, nor does it provide regulatory compliance to qualify for such licensing endorsements. At best, the current law for the chauffeur's license endorsement reference Title sixteen, chapter three, section thirty-one oh one. And third, currently issued the bill passed into law, our department does not have the ability to immediately verify the license status of CDLs issued by other licensing jurisdictions like California and other states. Therefore, we recommend that additional efforts be made to redefine the language use to provide clarity as well as to ensure compatible and respective provisions in Title sixteen. We look forward to working with you and your office to address these concerns. And, uh, just to give an update on, on where we at, uh, the bill started with six months, I, I got a report from my staff that we're, we're down to thirty-seven. And we're looking at three months of, of backlog on, on, uh, commercial vehicles testing. So with that, um, I have my staff, uh, here, the Administrator Maria, Maria Flores and, and, uh, the supervisors, Jesse Salas and Steve, uh, Uggan with, actually of the, uh, motor vehicle section. So with that, uh, if you have any questions, we're willing to, to clear, clarify and, and answer them.
Thanks, John, uh, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Senator Yamashita if she has anything, um, Mr. Vice Chairman, any questions or comments? Or Mr. Camacho?
Well, I, no, may, maybe my questions, I'll reserve it for Ms. Flores and, uh, her folks, uh, since I have some very specific questions about it. But I'm just wondering, you, you know, you just made the comment that, that I guess the backlog, uh, of applicants waiting to be tested for the driver's license that would allow them to drive the heavy vehicles has reduced from, I guess, it's now you have a, a list of about thirty-seven. And I'm just wondering if that's a function of the fact that when the milit- the pressure of the military buildup kinda went away, uh, these folks went and looked for other, you know, so, and so as a result, that backlog hasn't been building. But I'm afraid that once the, um, the milit- once the military buildup, um, uh, the gates open again, uh, is that we're gonna see that backlog increase. And so I think we need to kinda get in front of that anticipation and, and have something like this available. Um, and, and I understand that, you know, there's a balancing act here between, um, the not jeopardizing the federal funds, um, that, um, that I guess you could get in, in, you know, with relation to, to the heavy vehicle, the commercial vehicles, uh, licensing and whatnot. Uh, we gotta keep that in bal- balance so that we don't jeopardize that, but nonetheless, we've gotta get in front of this, uh, issue.
Uh, yes, I, I, I guess, Senator, uh, I, I that we, we have cleared that, um, that particular question of whether we will be jeopardizing the, the grant, uh, under the motor vehicle. That has been cleared by, by, uh, the Office of, um, Marie, Marie Flores, so that has been cleared, so there's, there's nothing wrong with, with the grant. The grant basically is basically to control the, the flow of the, uh, the traffic out there, you know, the inspection of, of those heavy vehicles. And it does not pertain to the licensing and, and conducting of testing, so that's been cleared. Uh, as far as, as the, the, uh, the, uh, outsourcing the commercial, I, we agree with that. And, and it's just a matter of what we're looking at right now is to, to validate those, uh, those, uh, basically so, uh, uh, CDLs from the states. And that's the mechanism that we're looking right now at how we're gonna do that, so that's something that our office and Senator Yamashita's staff are working together to try and clear that.
Um, Ms. Flores, if you could please join us at the table, uh, I do understand that Senator Ada has some specific questions he'd like to direct.
I guess while we're waiting for Ms. Flores to, to take her place, how is the, um, how is the program with respect to just your motor vehicle licenses, your operator's license? I mean, it's, I know that's been outsourced, correct? Uh, the, uh, testing and the...
The, the testing for the operator A, that's been outsourced, yes, uh, we're allowed to sign up five, five schools. That has been operating, uh, since the last, when the, the passage of the laws which Senator Yamashita mentioned. So, like you said earlier, we're down to a week time on our side to, to accommodate those people taking those, uh, class A, uh, uh, tests. So we're, we're pretty much good in regards to that area.
I, I just have a question of Ms. Flores on this issue, uh, you indicated, Mr. Camacho, that you're trying to reconcile the issue of how do you validate CD, uh, commercial driver's licenses from the states? And I guess you're, 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 you're concerned about that because of there's a provision in here about reciprocity, correct?
There's, there's no really reciprocity here because we're only allowing it for them coming here, if it's reciprocity, that means that if we go there, they allow it for us, so there's no reciprocity here.
That's right, and that's probably not gonna happen because...
So that's, I think we're, we're clearing that with, with the good Senator on that, on that language.
That's right, because as I understand it, the requirements for, to attain, to obtain a, a commercial driver's license in the mainland is a lot more extensive than what it is here. Um, and so, now, when you say though, validating that commercial driver's license, are you talking about, because my understanding is that if I'm gonna get a Guam driver's license, I have to turn in my mainland driver's license?
Are you, that's correct.
And so is that, is that the issue that we're trying to...
Well, some of the issues that we're, we're looking at for the CDLs are like, uh, how do we know this person has a, uh, 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 you know, been, is, is, is commercialized, has been suspended, for example, we don't know. So we need to verify those things, um, I think, uh, Maria can elaborate more into that, but that's some of the concerns, uh, if, if you wanna try and basically have them surrender those licenses and issue those particular class C or class D licenses. So that's some of the things that we're, we're, we're looking at, I think, one of the things that we're looking at is, we used to have this, uh, access with AMBA. And Maria, uh, my, my administrator can, can basically, uh, talk more about it, but AMBA is a system basically back then that we have, we used to access... We used to access it, but for so many reasons, we don't have that right now. So one of the things that we're looking at is trying to get that thing back to our system. And if we do have this AMBA, it would basically allow us to communicate with that association in order to basically verify these CDLs. You know, that's what I, we're looking at. So if Maria wants to elaborate more, you're more than welcome.
Good afternoon, senators. My name is Marie Flores. I'm the Administrator with the Motor Vehicle Division. And as the Director was mentioning, AMBA does provide what we call a means to verify whether or not the commercial driver has any infractions, whether it be in California or Florida, whatever, whatever state. AMBA would be able to capture that through the CDL program. Unfortunately, our department does not have access, currently have access to the AMBA net. And that requires membership. And as the Director was mentioning, back in the day, when Venture nineteen ninety-three, we had access to AMBA net. And we were able to verify several things. One, to keep abreast of best practices within the nation, to include Canada and its provinces, to provide the ability to determine whether or not a CDL holder coming to Guam has any infractions under the belt that requires adjudication from their issuing jurisdiction. And if coming to Guam has that been cleared. At present, we don't have that access again, so that's basically our shortfall.
If, if I may. It seems that we're dealing with two groups of drivers. We have drivers who are coming over from the mainland, who have Commercial Driver's licenses, and they want to be able to operate a vehicle here on Guam using that driver's license. Am I correct?
Yes.
That's one group. Okay. And so with that group, we're having this problem of how do we validate that they are in fact, they don't have any, you know, bad marks against them? That's, that's one group. But it seems that when we started working on this, the, the group we're really concerned about, that we want to address, are things like, for example, the tour companies, they need to license bus drivers, okay? And for them to license a bus driver, it was a one-time backlog of maybe, well, one-time, six months. And then if the guy doesn't pass it, he has to go to the back of the line again, and that may take another six months. And so that's the group of drivers that we are trying to actually address at this point. The one about the driver from the mainland US coming over, that's a, I think that's a separate problem. That, that needs to be addressed, but the more immediate one is the getting our people here to be able, or for the tour companies to be able to, to hire people and get them licensed in a timely manner. And I think that's where the focus needs to be.
And then equally important reciprocity should be taken in consideration. It allows individuals who decide to make Guam their home. And if we do have reciprocity, it'd make it a lot easier for them. Rather than, you know, thinking of coming to Guam only to find out that their CDL license is not valid here, and then they're going to have to go through the testing procedures over again. So that's going to be a setback on their part. And that's also going to impact the economy because as the transportation industry, they're crying for drivers. And that would be one way of addressing that problem, to include addressing the backlog that we currently have.
But until we address that validation problem, when that guy from the mainland comes over with his Commercial Driver's license and finds out that, you know, that's not going to work here, then he becomes part of that pool of the local drivers that we're trying to address.
Exactly.
Yeah. And so I, 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 I hope that we can continue moving forward to address the group of local applicants. And in the interim, we'll be working also on that group of mainland drivers who come over and, you know, and want to be able to jump into a truck right away, the next day, because he's got the Commercial Driver's license, which I guess he can do for, what, thirty days, right?
Yes, sir. Thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah. So, and hopefully then, with this, by outsourcing this, we may be able to maybe address that in a more timely manner. So that's, that's, that's the only point I wanted to bring up and clarify.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Any of my fellow colleagues have any more questions for these particular testimonies? Senator Ada?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. You know, I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it'll fall under the reciprocity or not. With our troops that just returned, those that have been driving military trucks, ten thousand pounds, or buses and things like that, would they be, would we be able to give them Commercial Driver's license for, with their military experience?
That's where we need to do a little bit more work with Senator Yamashita's office. We need to provide clarity as far as that provision goes. Our understanding of this provision is that, I'll take an, I'll give you an example of a company that provides contractual services to the military, which is VCSP at the time it was raised on. For the most part, the individuals that were driving the vehicle are contract hire, they're civilian. But the vehicles that they were using are owned by the military government. So of course, we don't have jurisdiction to pull that vehicle over, much less verify the licensing endorsement of that individual, unless it causes a case of imminent danger to the general public. That's when, whether it be us or PD can intervene.
Yeah, what, what I'm talking about is, they're not, you see, when they come home, they're inactive status again. They're only weekend warriors. They want to take their military driver's license, their military experience, and be able to get a Commercial Driver's license. So, you know, maybe we can work it into the bill. You know, I was at a conference in DC for service members, veterans and their families. And in Maryland, that's what they did, was these, all these service members that were returning from Afghanistan, Iraq, these, these men and women were able to get their Commercial Driver's license in Maryland with their, 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 their military experience.
If I'm not mistaken, Senator, with the military, they have their own testing procedures to be able to determine qualification of that individual to drive that particular vehicle. Because I can drive a truck, that doesn't necessarily mean I can drive all trucks. So the military's responsibility is to ensure they, that they do provide the training for that personnel to drive whatever trucks that is required of them.
So then wouldn't the same apply then to commercial? I mean, you're, you're looking at a person that's going to drive a truck, and then, you know, what, what specific truck? I mean, you, you just went from civilian to military and...
Right. But I guess the question lies is, we need to provide clarity from the Senator whether or not we're going to recognize that training certification from the military in lieu of an actual license issued from another licensing jurisdiction.
Okay. That, that's, that's the answer. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Senator Yamashita?
And in fact, Senator Ada, as a matter of fact, in our markup that we've already started, we actually have a section, Commercial Driver's License Exemptions, that, that does refer to federal statute that would give exemptions for those of military purposes who have, who have been inactive duty. And so I'm sure Tanya will be, we'll be talking, there'll be a markup. But we are actually already addressing that, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Senator Tiago?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. The question is for Marie. What, what does the subscription cost? And are there any ideas on how to work it into the, the Class C fee schedule so that you can, you can have access to the subscription service that you need to verify the CDL requirements?
Are we looking at increasing the licensing fees? Is that what you're implying?
Well, I'm, I'm considering that if the, if, if the subscription fee is within reason, and if you, if you looked at the total amount of, of Class C license and Class D licenses that are being issued, you might be able to solve the problem with a very insignificant fee increase on those licensing fees. But I don't, I don't know what the subscription fee is.
Okay. I'm going to need to get back with you as far as the actual fees for the AMBA net subscription for membership.
What are the D licenses and C license fees at right now?
Depending if you want it for three years or five years. So it's, it's basically as your operator's license, twenty-five for three years, forty-five for five years. But there's, I think I'm jumping the gun here, but there's another public, there's a bill that's being proposed to extend those licensing renewal periods.
But currently, they're, they're fairly low.
They're fairly low at twenty-five and forty-five dollars.
And you're right, they are considerably low in comparison to other licensing jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you. Senator Tiago? Thank you, Senator. I guess we'll just go ahead and move on to those who have testimony in favor. We'll, we'll be discussing this and other items later on in our hearing, John. But thank you all very much for joining us and for providing your input. I would like to beg the indulgence of the audience and, all right, Senator Ada.
It seems that the one hanging, sticking point that we have with this bill right now is on section two. Oh, I'm sorry, section, section three. That's regarding the Commercial Driver's License reciprocity. And if that was struck out, does everything else seem copacetic?
I think they're, I think they're doing that already, Senator Ada. I think they're...
Oh, you are? Okay. So then this thing should be ready for the June, January session then, right?
Okay, thank you. We'll try. We'll work as quickly as we can. I'd like to call forward on Mr. Paul Blaz, Mr. Robert Michael, and Mr., I'm sorry, Blackburn? Yes, please, please join us today. I'd like to beg the indulgences of those who are going to testify, as well as my colleagues. We did have a roundtable meeting scheduled for four o'clock today that's supposed to take place after the conclusion of our hearing. And due to the length of all of our proceedings so far, it's taken quite a while. We also still have one more confirmation hearing that we need to get through in this public hearing. So I'd like to beg your indulgences if we can be as expeditious as possible. But I would like to preface that by saying that I think there's a general consensus up here that this solution needs to be addressed as, as quickly as possible. So, gentlemen, if you, if you may.
Good afternoon, Honorable Senators. My name's Robert Michael. I'm with Guam Public Safety Educators. I'm here in support of this bill from a perspective of an organization that has been implementing the previous law very successfully for Class A operators' licenses. I believe that this will help to unclog some things. We get calls on a weekly basis from people asking that we, if we do Commercial Road Exams, and even motorcycle license road exams, we get this on a daily basis. There is a need for it. I've had, in fact, many of the transportation organizations here, when we initially started doing road exams for operator's license, immediately called us and asked us, could we do the Commercial licenses? And of course, we could not, but the interest at our level has been there. In terms of, of how it's affected from the operator's road exams, we have had nothing but praise from people who said, I'm glad this is available. We've had people that, that jobs were affected by it, that they're, they were able to get their driver's license before they were deployed. Many, many scenarios in which this has benefited people, not to mention that my company is employing people. And we're out there able to do road exams very efficiently, very effectively, very professionally, and very quickly. Sometimes if people call us and we have an opening, we can do a road exam that day or the next day. So it's been very successful. We've got nothing but very positive feedback. I would like to say that I have worked with the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Department of Motor Vehicles. And as the Senator stated, they, they always answer their phones. They've been extremely helpful in us to make this original transition, and it's been a very good working relationship. So this is a, a bill that I stand up wholeheartedly in support of.
Thank you, Mr. Michael, and Mr. Blackburn.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to express my concerns. And yes, we're in favor of this bill. But we want to go a little bit farther than that to discuss some of the issues at hand concerning not only the way the bill presents itself, but it seems to be a fundamental disconnect with the farm motor vehicles and where the industry stands in its relationship to the need for drivers. I actually wear two hats today. The first one being King Bus Tours. I'm the owner and operator of King Bus Tours since the year two thousand, when we formed our corporation here on Guam. We realized that after that, there was, you know, a need for us to expand and maybe do other things here on Guam. So we looked into the idea, from my background, being an educator and, and a trainer for many, many years, we decided to actually do a school here in two thousand six and have been a up and operating business as King Training Center here on Guam since two thousand six. We received our business license, and it was Art Luggan at the time that presented the, the letter of approval for us to go ahead and get that license. As far as we know, we're the only training facility on the island. There's some fundamental things that, that make it difficult to get a license in the first place. When you first show up, you not only just sign a piece of paper saying you want to go ahead and take the test, but in addition to that, you have to bring your own tractor-trailer. So that makes it very difficult for anybody that wants to try and get a license here on island. You have to either go to someone that has a tractor-trailer and befriend them, or even get into a contract situation where you're going to pay them back by working with them for a certain amount of years, which is, you know, perfectly understood. They, they put the training into getting someone up to par with taking a test, and then they want to get that back. Of course, you don't want to just have training and then someone actually get the license and go to someone else. So there's that, that feature. We presented our school as a standalone situation where people could come in and actually pay a fee and get the certified training that would be necessary in all areas that we could present for their taking the test, passing the test. But it was more than that. It was beyond that. It was not only just making sure they could pass the test, but it was making sure that they were going to be good and safe drivers on the roads of Guam. So there was that, that, that point that I want to make. We're part of the National Safety Council. When I first started, we had to not only buy our own tractor-trailers to bring in for the training, but I sent all my instructors to California for the California National Safety Council and presented all that information in two thousand six for the startup of our business. Just give you a reference, in two thousand six, what happened with, with the director at that time, Art Luggan. I want to read this into the record so you can understand exactly what his thoughts were, and they're pervasive. And I thought he actually had a pretty good look at what it was to become the first and only school here in Guam to teach locals and people how to, you know, drive heavy equipment here on, on the island of Guam. And I'll read this from the letter that we received from him. "After reviewing your formal request for Commercial Driving School that includes certificates regarding the extent of your, your training through the California National Safety Council, it is clear you qualify to offer this type of service. Also bearing in mind that the community would benefit greatly from a safety standpoint in light of recent tragic events." So obviously, he was thinking about, you know, maybe possibly accidents or some events that happened at that time that may be more necessary for the idea that the training was prevalent with our school. "Your Commercial Driving School would bring an important service that presently is only available to those individuals who obtain training through their commercial carrier employer. They train to be a bus driver or tractor-trailer operator, but must commit to work for the employer for a lengthy period. And this is understood because the employer has invested time and resources in the training of the employee. Unfortunately, this training is not mandatory. It is a good beginning because of what the..." It is a good beginning because of what the training accomplishes, which is better education and more safety minded drivers. The establishment of your school is approved, recognizing that this promotes safety and is in the potential driver's best interest to have another option to acquire these skills." So that was his opinion at that, at that time. Um, over these many years of being the uh owner operator of King Bus Tours, you know, we've had a big need for drivers for our company. And it started way back when, even before two thousand, when I needed bus drivers for, when I was the uh general manager of Stars and Stripes Dinner Cruises, we were actually busing our own people. We found out that, you know, there was a lengthy time to try and get people up to par, um, not only train them in-house, but to get them licensed because of the lengthy uh point of where they'd actually take a test. At that time, in two thousand, it was around three, three to four months, but we were able to live with that over these many years. Uh, up till within this last year, this last year, something changed dramatically with the policy of DMV. Where the policy was before, you could at least put your name down, or at least have your students' names put down on a list where you knew what the calendar date was, or an approximate calendar date wa- was to actually for to have them test. That's been done away with over this past year. I had three students um that needed to uh be tested, and so what we tried to do is get in front of that by, you know, actually finding out when a test date would be um, when we could actually take a test with our three students. So actually I was looking for a test date prior to us doing training, cause the training only takes six to eight weeks. But the actual test date could be as long as three to six months. So we're actually actually for a test date prior to the uh time of when uh we even first started doing training. The uh, the specific uh company that we're dealing with was Accent, Accent Controls Incorporated. Uh, it's part of the uh DLA Defensive Logistics Agency, uh Defense Distribution uh Guam Marianas. They're on the Navy side, it's a privatized firm that does transportation for the Navy. Basically for goods and services, whatever the Navy might need, they provide tractor trailers and transportation for the Navy in order for them to uh supply goods and services to the ships, that's basically what they do. They need tractor trailer drivers. They contacted King Training Center, which is my school, so they could go ahead and uh get these three drivers up to par and so they could take a test. We've been working with them, we started uh that training, actually we were introduced to Accent Controls, her name is Bobby Duennas um in July of two thousand twelve. Uh, we started training in September two thousand twelve and finished training around October two thousand twelve. And we really had a tough time trying to get these guys uh into tests. What made it even harder was this idea of not having a calendar date uh or a schedule. And we were told several times that uh Department of Motor Vehicles would call either the students or myself, and I requested them to call me because when you do training, you wanna do the training as close as you can to when you're gonna actually test. And so what was happening is, is we didn't know when the test date was, so we did the training without knowing when we're gonna test. And then several months later, which is like three, four months later, the students got a call from Department of Motor Vehicles saying, "Okay, are you ready to test?" But they didn't have the ability to go ahead and do any retraining or uh, you know, get a refresher course before the test date. In other words, they're calling like on a Thursday or a Friday saying, "Can you test tomorrow?" Or "Can you test on Saturday?" And this is the kinda skills that's necessary, you, you, you have to be as sharp as you possibly can be before you go in and take a test. So this, this policy shift within this past year and a half or so has, has changed dramatically in the way we were doing business. In other words, we can't do business on that level, uh and, you know, I actually said that it was rather absurd not to have a calendar or a schedule, but for whatever reason that fit their needs best, they felt like a calendar or a schedule wasn't necessary anymore. But it is for us, so there's this disconnect between Department of Motor Vehicles and King Training Center and how we actually do business together. Or at least I tried to attempt to do business together, uh we, we, we were not successful in getting these three drivers licensed yet. Uh, one was because it took so long for us to either get a test date with them and of course the students were saying, "No." They didn't wanna test, well of course that's perfectly understandable. If you don't, if you're not behind the wheel of a tractor trailer for three months and then all of a sudden someone calls you from DMV and goes, "Hey, do you wanna test tomorrow?", it just doesn't work out. So they were saying, "No." And then they'd say, "Okay, well, we'll, we'll call you when we're ready again." So another three months would go by, they call them up on a Wednesday and say, "Can you test on Saturday?", well again, same feature applies. And this can go on for years if you really think of it that way, because each and every time, there was no refresher cu- uh course for them to be, to be administered before them to test. Even when there's a refresher course, you know, it's not as good as say, training for uh six to eight weeks and then going ahead and taking the test immediately afterwards. So, you know, that's the point, is that there's a disconnect between Department of Motor Vehicles and not only the industry at hand, which is the entire transportation community, but also uh King Training Center where we weren't able to get our, our guys tested and, and successfully passed. Um, anyways, the uh, the lady's name uh that we were dealing with was Bobby Duennas. At that's Accent Controls Incorporated, the uh three drivers' names uh was Juan Cruz, Johnny Duennas and Paul Mendiola. Uh, in the interim over this past year plus, uh one of them was able to um get an upgrade in his business to a manager situation. And it was, you know, really not needed of him to uh drive, so as a poor excuse, in my opinion, uh he decided to drop out of the uh, uh, of that, of that program uh to try and get a test. He's basically given up because he wasn't able to test. He, he didn't wanna go through it anymore, even though I know that his employer wants him to go ahead and get a license. Uh, he's basically uh turned down and said uh that he didn't wanna go ahead and test anymore, that he was just basically tired of trying to uh, you know, get through the entire program. Which includes testing, get a license. Uh, my school, King Training Center, does not guarantee anybody a license. Okay, I wanna make it clear that we don't do that, we, we provide the training uh that's necessary for them to uh go in and take and try to pass the exam, but uh we don't guarantee anything like that, obviously, uh that wouldn't, that wouldn't be productive for, for me to try and uh do that. But what, what's, what's counterproductive here is that I've even had uh another gentleman come in and he goes, "Okay, I've got cash right now and I'll give it to you if you can help me get a license." And I told him, "No." That I wouldn't take his money, because we're not like that. I wouldn't take his money because I didn't know when he could test. There's no use training if I can't get him tested. And in the industry, when, when, when we're talking about people that's coming from the states, them people, that's not them people. You know what it is, these are island guys are going to the states, getting all this training that's necessary by each and every one of the fifty states so they can train and get a license, they've gone through ice and snow and mountains and they come back and they're heartbroken. Cause they can't get a license here. And when they do hand in their license, it's taken away and given, and then they get an A license, you know, so they can just go ahead and drive their vehicle. You know, they can't drive a tractor trailer driver. Uh, these are, these are local people that are getting hurt on a regular basis. These are local guys that can't bring a decent paycheck back home to their families. That's true, this is Guam, you know, working with Guam people, but it's really not working out. It's very hard to get a license here in Guam, extremely difficult. And I appreciate the fact that you were looking into this, thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Blackburn, uh do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments regarding these two individuals? Gentlemen, thank you very much for your testimony, um that will go ahead and conclude the hearing that we're having on this particular bill. I thank everybody for their patience and their um, their willingness to, to move things along here. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the nomination of Mr. Thomas V. Tanaka Junior as a member of the Cockpit License Board. Um, Mr. Tanaka, if you can please join us. Thank you Mr. Tanaka for being here today, you can go ahead and begin at any time that you're ready.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Uh, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you and, and to be of service to the people of Guam and the Cockpit License Board. This is my second time to be here before your committee for confirmation as a member of the Cockpit License Board. After being in this position for about one year, I wanted to take this time to give you a short report on our progress. First of all, as you may know, this board consists of two members, Mr. Donald Titanow and myself. Since my confirmation on December eleventh, two thousand twelve, I was the first and only board member until April twenty-three, two thousand thirteen, when Mr. Titanow was confirmed. In the absence of a chairman, I was elected to serve as the acting chair. Um, acting ch- uh chairman. Uh, um, we have met several ca- on several occasions with our primary mission to move towards the letting of bids for the issuance of three cockpit licenses as mandated by law. Since there has not been a board active since nineteen ninety-seven, there's a tremendous amount of work to do. And we have been working to do our best with the limited resources available. One of the more important items for us at this stage is having legal counsel appointed to the board. Legal counsel will be very helpful as we begin to draft, to draft the elements and the parameters needed for a proper letting of bids. As men- as mentioned in my first confirmation, when I, when I was asked to serve on this board, I thought to myself, "What could I possibly offer the board?" After pondering this question, I thought my experience both as a farmer and a businessman would be helpful in shaping policies that could benefit our island as a whole. I believe it is truly an opportunity to develop the cockfighting industry on Guam into a more wholesome and community oriented activity that enhances our culture and our economy. We all, as we move forward in issuing licenses, our vision as a board would be to promote facilities that would be safe, clean and attractive enough for our community at large and for the tourists visiting the island. These facilities would be a great venue to display our long and rich cultural island heritage, but at the same time provide another form of a u- a amusement activity for our tourists and also help spread tourism impact throughout the island. I believe these new cockpit licenses, if properly developed and regulated, can provide additional jobs and substantial tax revenues to our island. We also recognize that attempting to issue licenses and to enforce rules and regulations has no doubt been problematic given that the board has not been convened since nineteen ninety-seven. But with the legislature's support, I believe that we can get this done and develop the industry that, that we all can be proud of. As a step moving toward fulfilling the statute of requirements uh reporting, I'm happy to report that we have submitted to Governor Calvo our annual report on August one, two thousand thirteen. To the best of my knowledge, no reports have been submitted since the last board was in place in nineteen ninety-seven and I have taken the liberty of providing a copy to this committee. I would also like to uh, at this time, to request the committee's consideration on one issue. As you know, my presence here again today, the cock- as a cockpit uh member, the cockpit board member appointments are only for one year. For, for your information, the licenses we issue is for a five-year period with one five-year extension. I believe in order to fully develop the board and to properly regulate the licenses and to have consistency, the board appointment should be for a period longer than one year, which I would leave to the committee's dis- decision. With this in closing, I would like to again thank the committee uh for their time and look forward to serving the people of Guam as a member of the Cockpit License Board.
Thank you Mr. Tanaka for um your willingness to continue to serve our people. Um, I do have a few questions, um, and they, they center mainly around the um, uh, the peripheral um, uh potentialities of the cockpit license board, and I, I understand that the primary responsibility is to regulate cockfighting. Um, but there's also provisions in the law that allow it to touch into other areas of gaming. And so my first question and, and perhaps my most important one would be um, what is your position on the cockpit license board delving into the other areas of gaming with respect to um those functions here on the island?
Well, when I was asked to serve, it was primarily and I understood it was just for the cockpit license. Um, really it was only last night that I, that I really understood that uh it had oversight on gaming. Uh, in regards to gaming, you know, I haven't really studied the law or I'm not familiar with that portion of the law and um uh really I, my position is uh if, you know, I, I would study it and, and if, if gaming was a part of the, the regulations, I would just uh, uh regulate and enforce as, as, as directed.
Would you, would you be um, would you be looking at maintaining the status quo or even considering expanding the um, the current gaming activities or, or creating um avenues that would make it more accessible? What, what's your perspective on, on gaming in general, um aside from, aside from the limitations of cockfighting?
Again, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure exactly what, what the rules allow the, the board to do as far as gaming. If, if it was, if there was a um, a um, I guess a special election and, and the people voted for it, then I would enforce, you know, and, and do as the people mandated. But as far as what me as, as a, as a board member, um, again, I'm not um, I don't know the, the parameters of the law and I just have to take a look at it and, and um get back to you.
Um, but regardless of the, what the parameters of the law are, would, do you, do you hold the position that expanding in any way, shape or form, uh gaming activities here on Guam is, is something that you would be open to uh, absent of course a referendum or mandate directly from the people or from the leg- legislature, you as a board member, if, within your, your duties and responsibilities as a board member, would you be willing to um explore options of expanding uh gaming activities in any way here on the island?
I haven't uh, I'm not a gambler and so I, I mean, I have no, you know, I'm not, yeah, I'm not uh, I haven't explored it or I haven't, ha- don't have intentions to explore it right now.
Okay, so your, your intentions at this time as a nominee for this board is, is not to, not to necessarily expand gaming activities here on the island?
No, it's ju- really it's just to work on the cockpit board because this, this license has not been, or this board has not been convened since nineteen ninety-seven and there's a lot of work really with this, with the cockpit in its, of itself that um, uh, I believe needs, you know, needs to be taken care of.
My, my other question was with respect to, um, I'm looking here at your packet here on the various um, um business affiliations that you have um as a shareholder. And um, it lists here one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different entities to which you are a party of. And of course, that, that, there's no problem in that in general, but are you, uh, do you know whether or not any of these um entities are in any way, shape or form involved in gaming activities here on the island, are there any potential conflicts of interest?
No.
I also noticed that um, you, um, in some of them, you are a minority shareholder or a, or, or you're at least a partner and you're not a one hundred percent owner. Do you know if any of your partners or fellow shareholders have any uh gaming or gambling interests? Thank you Mr. Tanaka, do any of my fellow colleagues have any questions? Senator Anna.
Thank you very much Mr. Chairman and Mr. Tanaka, uh thank you for the willingness to be able to serve in this committee. Uh, I guess this is in line with the level of activity that's authorized by law out there. Uh, my understanding is that there's one legitimate cockpit right now at this point in time that is operational. I know a few years back, maybe about twelve, thirteen years ago, there was another cockpit that was in the process of, of being established and that for some odd reason, whatever the reason is, went under. Now, there's been a lot of concern raised about fight line activities being tolerated within the community. Do you consider the Cockpit uh, uh Commission uh having a certain responsibility of ensuring the compliance of the authorization within the law? Are you, are you of the position that really that should be Guam Police Department and the law enforcement rather than, than try to assist and coordinate that?
Actually, you know, uh, that question came up and, and um with the board and, and our issue with that is that uh if we're gonna go out and uh issue new licenses, um, you know, to, to these, to these potential operators, they're gonna come in and they're gonna bid and they're gonna invest and they're gonna build these facilities and get them licensed and get all the proper permits. Uh, and then you have these operators who are outside, uh, who don't have the licenses, don't have the permits, who are actually taking business away from these operators, they aren't paying taxes, they aren't getting the, the, uh, getting the, the proper permits, um, and we asked compliance how, how to regulate it and they said that was something that GPD or Guam Police, they didn't have uh enforcement over those, those facility, those operators. Uh, you know, I, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna go out and, and issue these licenses, I think we should have some enforcement over those, those uh, those outside operators to, to ensure that the operators who have the licenses and, and who are operating properly and who are paying taxes, uh, you know, get the benefit of those licenses.
The only reason why I bring that up is because obviously uh by law, there's an authorization for no more than three facilities. If my understanding is correct, that it, it's still similar to the provisions over the last fifteen, twenty years. But then, there's more than ample opportunities for participants in the cockfighting activity to be able to go out there and actually be competitive, and I'm talking about Village Fiesta's that authorize this type of activity with a lot of the mayors. I mean, there are different activities that are authorized during the course of the entire calendar year, especially- calendar year, especially with cockfighting. I mean, that's limited to a certain number of months. So, that being the case, I just think that perhaps we need to put a little bit more effort in terms of enforcing the existing law. Otherwise, if we continue to somewhat acknowledge the existence of these outside activities other than brother and a brother training their roosters, or family members, immediate family members training their roosters, whatever the case may be, I think it would bar into really not complying with the intent of the law. The intent of the law is exactly what you just shared, to try to keep it on a limited basis, but also to authorize the activity. And like I shared with you a minute ago, there are other activities where a lot of these cockfighters can be able to participate in. So, I think I'm veering into a somewhat sensitive situation as it deals with some of our recreational fighters, but like I said, if it's amongst immediate family members and their training, whatever the case may be, I think that that can be appropriately acknowledged, but being able to perhaps work with GPD so that there can be better compliance and keep it somewhat controlled or contained is perhaps the direction we need to take. But thank you very much for offering your services to the commission, and certainly wish you best of luck in terms of carrying out the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Verogin. Senator, I'm sorry, did you have any, Senator Yamashita, Senator Ada, Senator Limtiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tommy, thank you for stepping up and providing a much-needed public service. I've known you personally, as well as from a business perspective. I think you'll make a fine addition to the board, and you have my full support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Limtiaco. Mr. Tanaka, thank you again very much for joining us today, for your patience and for your willingness to serve. I very much appreciate it, and so does the entire committee and the people of Guam. Thank you for coming, joining us today. We'll go ahead and conclude this nomination hearing, and that will also conclude our public hearing today. The committee will continue to receive testimony on all items heard this afternoon. Please address any written testimony to the committee on aviation, ground transportation, regulatory concerns, and future generations, and maybe submit it via email at senatorsandnicholas@gmail.guam gmail.com, or hand delivery to the legislature's mailroom at Suite 203 in the main legislative building, 155 Hester Plaza, Gotteneg Guam. Thank you, everybody, for your time and attendance today. We'll go ahead and adjourn at 4:45 this afternoon. Thank you very much.